Good evening. I would like to welcome everybody to the council meeting of Wednesday 3rd, Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023. Let the record show that all councilors are present. Adds and deletes. Add consent agenda number nine. Delete bids and quotes, number one. Could I have approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil, seconded by Councilor Bayless. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move on to approval of minutes. Approve the minutes of Hibbing City Council Meeting of April 19th, 2023. Wishes of the council. Motion approved by Councilor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by Council Fossil. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approve the minutes of Hibbing City Council Workshop Meeting of April 19th, 2023. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Council, I think it was Jay Hildebrand. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move on to the consent agenda. Approve accounts payable dated 4/20/23. Checks number 174-563 through 174-620 in amount of $236,926.40. 5/30/2023 checks number 174-621 through 174-661 in the amount of $232,259.20. Approve the city payroll for pay period ending 4/21/2023. Checks number 168-714 through 168-724 in the amount of $565,909.91. Authorize the hire of Heather Motvie for the seasonal recreational programmer with the city service department pending successful completion of pre-employment contingencies. Authorize the promotion of Joseph Fisher to full-time driver paramedic with the Hibbing Fire Department effective May 4th, 2023. Acknowledge the resignation of Shelley Hansen from the Hibbing Economic Development Authority effective April 1st, 2023. Number six, acknowledge the resignation of Roger Sockman from the Chisholm-Hibbing Airport Authority effective April 1st, 2023. Number seven, set the next regular Hibbing City Council Meeting for Wednesday, May 17th, 2023 at 5:00 PM at City Hall in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chamber. Number eight, set the Hibbing City Council Workshop for Wednesday, May 17th, 2023, following the Hibbing City Council Meeting at City Hall in the Hibbing City Council Chamber. Number nine, authorize the mayor to sign the support of May 2023 as Mental Health Month. Look around, look within in the city of Hibbing. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written and published.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I would like to read the proclamation that goes with Mental Health Month, what we just approved. It says, whereas the area that someone lives in plays a significant role in their overall health and well-being, and whereas surroundings can impact if, how, and when a person's needs are met, which in turn affects mental health, and whereas having safe, stable, and healthy home conditions set the foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health, and whereas with early and effective interventions, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and the city shares the burden of mental health problems and has the responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I, Mayor Pete Heiduk, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month in Hibbing, Minnesota. As the mayor, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Hibbing, Minnesota, to recommit our community to increasing awareness and the understanding of mental health. The steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the needs for the appropriate and accessible services for all the people with mental health conditions. Nothing with the public forum. We'll move on to, at this time, department committee reports. Betsy, please.
Mayor, members of the council, tonight I'd like to offer Resolution 230501 to change Section 1A1 in the policy statement concerning citizens' appointments to advisory boards and commissions. In our 2018 City of Hibbing comprehensive plan political environment, goal number one is to promote a sense of ownership in the community and increase community awareness, engagement, optimism, and participation, and determine best practices and strategies for recruiting community members to serve on local boards and commissions. This resolution supports that, to implement a policy that provides cohesion on who may be seated on board, City of Hibbing boards and commissions. So I'd ask tonight that you approve the change to that section in that policy statement to reserve the seats for citizen members on boards and commissions in the City of Hibbing to residents of the corporate city limits of Hibbing. We did not change any substantial, we have not made any other substantive changes to the verbiage, merely corrected a few misspellings, fixed some formattings, and modified our choice of words to be a little bit more concise, and I worked with city clerk on this action.
Very good. Hearing what the points of the resolution are, could I have support?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion.
Motion. Okay, we have a motion from Councilor Hoffman-Sockman, second. Support by Councilor Schweberger. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Betsy. We'll move on to building official, Pat Green.
Mayor and council members, on April 24th, Planning Commission heard a request from Madison Call for the operation of a kennel on the subject's property. This property is over 10 acres and it's on Foss Road, which is owned A1, and that's a permitted use as applying for an interim use permit for a kennel operation. They met all the conditions. The Planning Commission voted 3-0 to advise the council for approval. The resolution, IUP 2301, also has three conditions for this kennel operation. One is mandatory certificate of occupancy from the Building Department. The other one is a time limit, and the Planning Commission put 25 years. interim use permit is only, if the operation does not last, let's say it lasts 10 years, they sell, and the new people want to keep conducting that, they would have to come in before the Planning Commission. It doesn't just go with the property. And the property is all screened with trees, so they will have a fence, but they won't have to screen that from the neighbors. So asking for approval of IUP 2301.
Hearing what Mr. Green had regarding his recommendation for kennel boarding, wishes of the councils.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. We'll move on to Finance Director, Treasurer Sheena Muller.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight I'm offering Resolution Number 23-05-02. This resolution is for accepting our final award from the Minnesota Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. It's in the amount of $2,004.23, and it's relating to the spring 2022 flood event. This award will reimburse the administrative costs relating to the grant. I'm asking for council to approve the award.
Okay, hearing what Treasurer Sheena Muller said, could I have a motion? Motion by Councilor Schweberger, second.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Sheena?
Thanks.
Thank you. Chief SD.
Mayor Collins, good evening. First item I have for use to authorize our mutual aid agreement with State of Los Angeles. With the new sheriff on board, that's really the only main change as far as the mutual aid agreement goes.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. SD had to say, could I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion.
We have a motion from Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. B?
B and C are kind of together. I'll start off with B. It's to authorize an additional part-time PBA officer within our department. We're currently only budgeted for one, leaving us about an $11,000 budget shortfall. Fortunately, City Services was nice enough to borrow us $11,000 due to them not having a position filled since January 1. So thank you to Nick for allowing us to borrow their funds, and Sheena will do the appropriate transfer on her end to make that happen. As we know, there's a major issue with Blight in town, and we feel this is a good way to address that by having two part-timers versus one.
Very good. Hearing what Chief SD had to say, could I have support?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilor.
So chief, and then in the next budget cycle for 2024, this will be under yours, then you'll be able to sustain this.
Right, correct.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
Hearing no more discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. C?
And then C is to actually hire two of the part-time PBAs, Olivia Bossi and Courtney Anderson. We're really fortunate because both of these gals are currently in the law enforcement program, so it's nice to get them on board with our department in this position as it is.
So we're looking for a motion to hire two part-time to fill the PBA positions? Could I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to City of Minnesota, Greg Presents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So I have a couple of things from my office this evening. First item, Chief SD kind of mentioned Blight. We have been talking internally about strategies. We are going to amp up that effort, I believe, late May, early June. We've been talking about capacity, how to get the work done, all the different assets that we'll be using. So I wanted to report to the city council and our residents on kind of what the next steps are there. Item number two that I wanted to cover, we have Park and Trail System Master Plan going on right now to study that is being run by Nick in our city services, conducted by Bar Engineering locally here. That survey is now live, and we want to encourage the city council staff, but our residents, we want our residents to reach out and fill out that survey. I think we have a link on our website if I'm not mistaken. We have heard one little snippet of interest from some of our resident, seems to be a little bit long. I just want to make sure that, yes, it's a robust survey. It's a robust survey. We haven't done this for many, many years. There are a lot of details that we need to cover in that survey, so I want to make sure that people know, yes, it's a longer survey. It's robust for a reason, so please bear with us, but please go ahead and fill out that survey. The last, we heard, we've got about 350 or 60 or so that have been filled out. Does that sound about right, Nick? So we're getting there. Item number three, our city council, in a workshop earlier, I guess it was two weeks ago, talked a little bit about recycling locally here. We talked about using a third-party vendor to do that recycling. We are working on that internally. I know there's been some questions about next steps and whatnot. We're not quite ready for a broad rollout, but we will do that soon. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have kind of the logistics all worked out, so I wanted to report back to the city council on that. And then finally, also for our residents, our city council and staff conducted strategic planning on, I believe it was the 26th of April, about a four-and-a-half-hour meeting. We had a moderator in. We were able to come up with six key strategies that we're going to be rolling out, hopefully by the end of the month. I'll do a broad rollout to the city council, have a question and answer period, but most importantly, we'll have the city council take action on it, accept that as our strategic priorities and goals, and then we'll start to socialize that with our residents and our stakeholders, the HRA, the PC, and kind of all those other stakeholders. So mostly FYI for our residents, but you can look for that coming up here, hopefully by the end of the month, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
That will do it. Thank you.
One point I could add, I did bump into Pete Carroll yesterday, it was Bar running, and he said he's very pleased with the response already compared to other ones that he's done. So I'm glad that you reinforced to move forward, but he was happy where we are already.
It's very exciting to see it come together.
All right, we'll move on to bids and quotes. City Engineer Jesse Story.
Mayor, council, I have a couple items here, so bear with me. The first one is a professional services agreement for RPR services with SEH. This will provide inspection services for our city paving and state aid paving project. The agreement is in the amount not to exceed $48,000, and we will be reimbursed through our state aid funds for this, for inspection services that cover both projects. I'm asking for council approval to approve the professional services agreement.
Could I have a motion to approve the professional service agreement?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. B?
Mayor, council, we opened bids for the city sidewalk project for this year. A low bid was from Concrete Works LLC in the amount of $81,615.15. The project breakdown is $54,865.73 for the city and $26,734.42 for the residents. We did have $75,000 budgeted for the city for this project, so we're about $20,000 under budget, and I'm asking for council to approve the bid to Concrete Works LLC.
Could I have a motion to approve the bid with Concrete Works?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless. Support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Jesse, I just have one question. If there is funding left, can people still sign up?
Yes, we can have, I think we have two right now that would petition for next year, and we will contact them to see if they want to be in the program for this year.
Very good. I appreciate that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. C?
Mayor, council, we opened bids for our paving project for this year. Low bid was from KGM Constructors in the amount of $2,137,595.35. We had two really good competitive bids. They were, both the bids were underneath our estimate, which is really good. There is a breakdown in your council packet. I'd like to go over that so we all understand the numbers. On the left side of that breakdown, so for the city paving, we get state aid maintenance dollars. So our allotment for this year is $422,764. We do have bond interest on a state aid bond that we're paying. That's $29,000. So the total we have available is $393,764 from our state aid maintenance funds. We had $464,620 budgeted with city funds, which gives us a total available budgeted amount of $858,384. The breakdown for city paving through the bid was $904,185.25, so we're about a little over $45,000 short additional funds that we need for the city paving portion. So I put on there a couple of potential funding areas to cover that $45,000. We did a crack ceiling project with the county, and we're $49,000 roughly under on that bid, but that comes out of our Public Works operating budget, and with the winter that we had, I would not like to take it out of there, just because that comes out of that operating budget. We do have $65,000 budgeted for alley paving that we could potentially use, or we could use out of the permanent improvement fund balance, there's a little over $793,000 in that fund. I would recommend that we take the $45,000 out of that fund and leave the alley paving, so we could use that this year, and then leave the extra from the crack ceiling in the operating budget from Public Works.
Okay, hearing what City Engineer Jesse Story just provided to you regarding options, or did you want to, so your recommendation, you want to go with this, or will that be something that will be decided later? Are you asking to add that to your request?
Yes.
How you want to fund it?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say.
I'd make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. D?
So was that approving the bid from KGM as well?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the whole, that was my intention, was the whole thing.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be clear.
Yep.
Andy, that's okay that we did it that way?
Okay, thank you. So we had our exhaust repair on dump truck. It should be 66069, not 67. This dump truck is a 2013. If you see the blue and orange dump trucks that are driving around, this is the oldest blue one we have. It's a 2013. We needed to repair the exhaust system on this truck. The total for the repair is $3,279.14 from Midstate Truck Service, and I'm asking for council approval.
Wishes of the council regarding exhaust system repair.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. All in favor? Or any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mayor, council attaches a quote or a service invoice from Ziegler for replacing the transmission control unit and wearing ends on the road grader 66047. This is one of the road graders that the city owns. This is the newer of the three that we own. It's a 1998, so I'm asking council to approve this invoice for $4,652.92.
Wishes of the council for approving replacing the transmission control unit.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Thank you. Jesse, it seems like some of these things that we've been reapproving so far, are they, is this equipment getting at the end of their lifespan? Is that why we're having so many, yes?
Councilor Hoffman-Sockman, yes, that is one of the big reasons. One of the reasons we had a really hard winter. We put a lot of hours on our equipment. The other half of that is our equipment is getting old. I mean, this is a 98. It should have been traded in years ago, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mayor, council attaches a proposal from Brown InterTech for materials testing services on our state aid and city paving projects. This is required by MINDOT to have the materials tested on these projects. The amount of the agreement is $20,025.0. This will be covered by state aid funds out of the construction end, so it will not come out of the city paving, and I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, Jesse's looking for approval of InterTech, Brown InterTech, for testing? Motion?
Motion approved.
Who said that?
Councilor Whitney, I'll second it.
Okay, Councilor Whitney, second by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. G?
Mayor, council, this is a replaced controller unit on sanitation truck 66107. The current parts are malfunctioning, so we had to get this fixed. This is a 2016 truck. The cost for the repairs is $4,500, and up to $150 for freight, and this is from Pyramid Equipment, and I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, we're looking for quote or approval for replacement controller unit. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweberger. Support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mayor, council, this next one is to, we had to replace the turbo charger and the actuator on dump truck 66067. This is a 2006 dump truck. This is one of our older orange dump trucks that you see going around. The total cost is $4,062.08 after we get credit for the cost of the core, and this is through Midstate Truck Service, and I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, we're looking for support to replace the charger and actuator.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Jesse, what, to go with these trucks, because Councilor Hoffman-Sockman asked a question earlier about the age of some of our vehicles. Are any of these, I mean, I know we need them, because we only have so many trucks, so that's why we have to keep, we can't park one until we get a new one. We need them all function.
Right.
Very correct. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Aye.
Mayor, council, this is for, from John Deere. This is to replace the pivot pins and the bushings on the loader 66032. So this is a loader we use on our snowball. This is a 2012 loader, so we've been using it since it was new with the snowball, and we have to send this out. You have to totally split it in two pieces to change this, and it's pretty much just wore out because the snowball is so heavy. Total cost is $7,969.95, and I'm asking for council approval.
Looking for approval to replace pivot pins. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless, second.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweberger. Any discussion?
Just a quick.
Councilor Hoffman?
So Jesse, is this our new one?
No, we have a 2016, I believe, John Deere loader, but this is, this one's a bigger loader.
Oh, okay. Okay.
The loader's in really good shape. It runs fantastic. It just wore out the bushings and the pins that pretty much hold the loader together.
That was a John Deere?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move on to K.
Mayor, council, this is for the waste treatment plant. This is to replace my rotor and stator on one of our pumps. The cost is $3,924 plus shipping from Liberty Processing Equipment, and talking with Dave, it sounds like we really need this pump, so I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, we're looking for support for replacing the motor at the waste treatment plant. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Councilor Bayless, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to There's Nothing Boards Commissions, move on to license and permits. One, approve the raffle permit application request of Iron Range Boxing to hold their raffle on Saturday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three at Palmer's Tavern. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweiger?
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Number two, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hiving High School to hold their raffle at the Masaba Country Club on Monday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman? Support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Number three, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hiving Area Chamber of Commerce to hold their raffle on Thursday, July sixth, twenty twenty-three, and Mr. Nick's corner bar. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweiger? Support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand?
Whitney.
Whitney? Sorry about that again. All in favor say aye, right?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, approve the raffle permit app, request of the Iron Range Motorcycle Club to hold their raffle on Saturday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at I R, I R M C Clubhouse. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Fossil?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Approve the special event permit application for the American Cancer Society to hold the relay-for-life of St. Louis County event in Bennett Park on Friday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman? Support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Approve the twenty-twenty-three transient merchant application renewal request of Dean Davich of Happy Dean's Eats to sell food in Hiving. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve. Jay had it first.
That was really good, though.
Uh, motion by Councilor Hildebrand, seconded by Councilor Bayless? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Could I have a motion for adjournment?